Item five, work session, five A, changes to the appointment policy for boards, commissions, and committees. Aubrey?
Good evening. Oh, here we go. Okay. So, we are discussing some changes to the appointment policy tonight, and this is a little bit of a team effort. There were a handful of changes to the appointment policy, and if y'all have questions, the other staff members who represent these other entities that I don't are here to answer any questions. So, the first change was to keep Friendswood beautiful, to add two alternate members. They have regular members, and they just don't want to change their quorum requirement, but to have two alternate members to be able to call on if needed to hold their meetings. The Planning and Zoning Commission, we changed our resolution several months ago to change our meetings from first and third Thursday to second and fourth Thursday. So, this is just formalizing that change as well. And then, kind of a new topic for discussion is our zoning board of adjustment. Currently, we have five regular members and four alternate members, and there was a suggestion to possibly change to seven regular members and two alternate members. So, just a little bit of background on, oh, let's see. I'm gonna go over the other change, and then we'll get into ZBOA a little bit more. The volunteer application on page one was to add a line with city, state, and zip. Page two was to remove election worker as an option to check off. And page four was replace the word "may" with "will," since it's now required and added prior to appointment at the end.
Will what?
Um...
Just for background checks.
Background check, okay.
...to have background checks.
Okay. Thank you.
So, let's see. Do y'all have any questions about keep Friendswood beautiful for James Tony?
How many members they have? Twenty-one? Twenty? Nice evening.
And then, so Planning and Zoning, that one's already kinda done. Any questions about the volunteer application? Okay, so ZBOA. Currently, state law requires that the board must consist of at least five members appointed for two years. It says you may provide for the appointment of alternate board members, and that cases must be heard by seventy-five percent of the members. So, if we have a five-member board, that would be a minimum of four. If we had a seven-member board, that would be a minimum of five. I did go look at some other cities, just to see where, you know, other cities are at. The most common seems to be the five regular and four alternate. City of Plano has eight regular members and two alternate, and the city of Denton has six regular and three alternate. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission, these requirements are actually in the zoning ordinance, so P&amp;Z is gonna have to look into this and make a recommendation. So, if y'all are supportive of investigating this change, then we can commission the Planning and Zoning Commission to research and make a recommendation. But if y'all just wanna leave it as is, just don't wanna waste Planning and Zoning Commission's time, they have other things to do too. So, just kinda wanted to get some feelers for some things tonight. If y'all have any questions.
What is P&amp;Z's recommendation? They just leave it the same?
We don't have a recommendation from them at this point.
Okay.
So, that kinda leads into my question. What did bring this about in the first place to cause this to actually be on the agenda or on our work session? What was discussed?
With respect to the zoning board of adjustment, it was a council member's request or suggestion to look into appointing and not calling Councilmember Rocky out.
Over here.
But in regard to the attendance and the frequency of certain alternate members sitting at the dais, I believe, was the impetus behind this.
And don't I recall, ZBOA meets less than anybody. I mean, we would go years without a ZBOA meeting.
They usually meet at least three or four times a year.
Most recently, it was Construction Board of Adjustment that has not met in years.
Oh, that's the one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my reason for recommending it is it was, even with five, with four alternate members, they sometimes were not being able to have meetings. So, one of the things about doing this was the alternate members, some of them would be really good on the whole thing, and I think what we're gonna have to do is if we go to seven, which I think we should do, we should make it very clear that you gotta attend. You know, they get plenty of warning, weeks and weeks of advance warning. And the other thing is that when people come up in front of the zoning board of appeals, it's in general their last chance. And, you know, it'd be nice to have a full complement of your citizens up here hearing your case. So, with seven and two alternates, I don't think they're gonna have any problem getting a quorum, and they really should be looking at themselves if they're having that problem. So, that was the reason for doing this, 'cause the alternate membership was just very confusing as to who does what, and when they were on, and when they would get called, so.
So, with seven members plus two alternates, needing five to establish quorum, any of the nine count an alternate can fill in? And why do we need to wait on P&amp;Z to make, it sounds like, a good plan?
Just the way our ordinance is written, it requires Planning and Zoning Commission's input on zoning ordinance, yeah.
Well, I have another, some more information about ZBOA to bring up in the next section of my presentation, so.
Okay.
All right. So, like nod heads, yeah? All right, we'll look into that. All right.
Yeah, so I don't know why we would change anything. I mean, I don't know. Making boards bigger does not guarantee a more frequent quorum. It doesn't. I don't know that it changes anything, so. I mean, doing things just for the, it's on, doing things just for the sake of doing them. I mean, and I get it, right? I mean, the goal or the intent is to get a quorum more frequently, and I appreciate that and understand that. But I think if you volunteer to be on one of these boards or commissions, that you should take that seriously, and that's, you know, a duty that you've fulfilled. So, I think changing it from five to seven doesn't change that responsibility. You don't, you know, I mean, we certainly don't have anything to hold over their head to make sure that they show up, other than, you know, removing them from their position if they don't make it so many times, which I know we've talked about doing in the past on other boards. I just don't know that this does anything, so why spend the time and energy at P&amp;Z and spend the time and energy up here? It doesn't make sense to me. That's my opinion.
All right.
I'll talk to P&amp;Z, see what they say. Maybe they'll agree with John. It's the same number of members, right? It's nine members. We have five and four alternates now. We'd have seven and two. Still nine, it still drives up the quorum number, though. But I agree, you know, we oughta be holding these people's feet to the fire, and if people are not showing up, we need to reappoint different people.
Did ZBOA make this recommendation too, or just Steve?
No, they have not weighed in on this yet.
Have you had a meeting, Phil, since you've been appointed?
No, no.
They haven't called you yet.
We will be having one soon, 'cause we need a new chair and vice chair, so that's on the list of things to do soon.
They show up, Phil, or else you'll be the chairman.
The Rotary, a long time ago, if you didn't make the meetings in enough time, you got a goat delivered to your home, and I know that for a fact, 'cause I had a goat at my house, and I played with it for a whole week, and had a great time when I was a little kid. But we could always get a goat and bring it to their house, and tell them they're gonna get to keep the goat for a week unless they show up.
Any other bad ideas? All right.
Okay, so we'll, then, that'll just piggyback into the next portion of the discussion tonight is the development regulations. And again, just looking for input, Planning and Zoning has to weigh in on most of this, but we're just looking for guidance and direction at this point. So, another topic is ZBOA authority. As far as state law, state law allows ZBOA to do administrative appeals, which is if the building, if the, not necessarily, but if one of the city staff, usually building official or city planner, make a decision that a developer or somebody doesn't necessarily agree with, they can appeal to the zoning board of adjustment. We've not had an administrative appeal that I can recall in the last twelve years. Special exceptions is another allowance by state law for ZBOA. And this is the particular section of our ordinance that is very, very detailed. We go into permanent special exceptions, we go into temporary special exceptions, and there's criteria for all of those items. State law doesn't have any criteria, they just say ZBOA can hear special exceptions. And so, our ordinance is a lot more strict and detailed than state law. And then, as far as variances, we also have a list of findings that the ZBOA has to basically check off in order to approve a variance, which again, is not in state law. So, our proposal is to consider making our ordinance just be consistent with state law. I did look at a few other cities, and basically, they just copy what's in state law, and they're not as restrictive as we are. So, if that's, if nobody has any major objections to that, we can have the commission look into that as well and make a recommendation on that. Again, it's in the zoning ordinance, so P&amp;Z has to make the recommendation.
And who recommended, brought this recommendation?
This was brought up by staff mainly.
This followed a previous zoning board of adjustment case in which a particular item had gone back and forth a couple of times, and there were a number of opportunities for the item to be approved, but the commission didn't feel that their authority was broad enough to approve it.
Okay.
And this was an effort to allow us to have some more flexibility from the zoning board of the commission.
This would make that whole process?
It would give them the opportunity to make a decision that made sense within the parameters of state law that didn't quite fit our ordinance previously.
Okay.
Possibly keep us out of court, because ZBOA didn't feel like they had the authority to allow something that, so they basically, in the particular case that we're talking about, without going into details, they followed exactly what P&amp;Z had recommended without making, you know, and P&amp;Z obviously has some constrictions on what they can do too. So, anyway, just broaden their ability to make allowances, if you will, to things, and not make us have to go to court to settle these things, because once ZBOA rules, they're sort of a, they're a legislative body that we can't overturn what ZBOA enacts, votes on, so then we're sort of stuck. So, if we give them more latitude, I guess, then hopefully we'll, see what I'm saying, Phil?
And state law does still, like, for a variance, there has to be a hardship on the property, but like I said, our ordinance is, has more items that they have to check off in order to approve a variance, so.
And so, staff is okay with us, or reducing the requirements, it sounds like?
And the answer to that is yes, and the rationale behind it is if the zoning board of adjustment, P&amp;Z and council ultimately just continue to reinforce the same rule, then there's really no relief valve. When staff does its review and says it's not in compliance, then that's pretty much what ZBOA then reinforces, which we appreciate it from a staff perspective, but in reality, there are instances in which it makes sense for the quasi-judicial board to make a recommendation that doesn't necessarily agree with staff's, but allows for a variance under certain circumstances.
Okay.
If I'm understanding this correctly, this will be less restrictive, or it'll be the same restrictions as the state is. In other words, we're not gonna be more restrictive than the state, so I think that's, I mean, I would love for P&amp;Z to land on that one, I think that's probably a good recommendation.
It allows for there to be another body to make a decision that just doesn't continue to uphold the rules as written, allows for some flexibility.
Okay.
Good.
All right. The next topic is building codes and fire codes. So, we are looking at updating from the 2012 to 2018 international building codes and the 2017 national electrical code. These codes are, their international building codes are published by the International Code Council. All the codes are updated every three years, and our ISO rating requires that we adopt codes within two code cycles. So, being on the 2012 right now, we're gonna jump to the 18, just so we don't have to do this again in three years. It'll kinda put us a little bit ahead. As far as the 2018, our building official's here tonight, he can explain, the 2012 to 2015 was some cleanup, and then 2015 to 18 wasn't quite so bad. So, he can go over those changes, and then Fire Marshal's here to kinda go over the fire code changes as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brian Rowan, building official. So, for this iteration of code, this is kind of a perfect year to go ahead and jump the step to, rather than going to the 15, then into the 18, just because the 15, like Aubrey had said, was kind of a cleanup of the 12. The 12 was kind of our big step on code. 18 kinda clarifies things and makes it a lot more enforceable. It made it actually, many of the items made it easier for the contractors. It just made it easier for code officials to understand it, made it easier for contractors to go ahead and enforce, and gave them far more flexibility. Unfortunately, code's a dry subject, and there's not some wild, exciting things that are changing. A lot of the changes in the codes are bringing in solar is the big portion of it. I've got books that just talk about the changes in all the different codes, and I would guess that more than sixty percent of that is bringing in new technology and solar, just updating it and providing opportunities, which we still are just on the cusp of it. We do start to see a lot more solar programs in the city, but we aren't at the point where it's a big change for the contractors that we're dealing with on that. There are more on top of it than, say, a lot of others, because it's so new technology anyway. So, on the international code, that's the predominant one that we see on the commercial side. Ah, there we go. The residential is, like I said, again, some dry code things that are coming in. It does allow for some more flexibility on some things as far as adding longer cords for the dishwashers, and other than that, it's not anything crazy, where when we went from the nine to 12, we did start to see some different changes. These are just things that kinda clean up. Bringing back in some of the old things that had dropped off, water hammer, resters, is, like I said, nothing real exciting. Plumbing code and mechanical code are kinda in the same situation. The international energy conservation code is one of the codes that was the big hurdle that we ran into when we went into the 12. It was very difficult to, for the contractors to comply with that, so we started taking the 15 code, because it corrected some of the sins of the 12 code already. So, a lot of our contractors are already into the 12 and starting to move into the 18 as we've gotten into that point. The electricians, for the most part, they stay to the latest codes. Their TDLR license requires them to be to the latest code, so most of them are already enforcing onto the 2017 national electric code. We're not breaking any new ground here. We are moving into a situation where we are able to kick the can on this ISO, so we aren't gonna come back in and keep changing things on the contractors. So, that is, our goal's moving into the 2018. Any questions over building codes? I know.
How many solar inspections have you done this year?
I can get you that number, but I, we are at, I saw three solar permits come in this week, so we are starting to see that technology definitely coming into the community. Exciting to see, and it's between the backup generators and solar, we are starting to see a lot of alternate sources of power, obviously, when we get in these situations with the hurricane, and then also, I think, we are embracing a more conservative nation.
Thanks, Brian. Brian Mansfield.
Brian Mansfield, the Fire Marshal's office. Don't have a whole lot of changes, most of them are the same ones that we've had before, some amendments we already have. We're talking about ZBOA earlier, they already act as our board of adjustments, so we removed that out of the code and allowed that to happen, also the same thing with the penalties. So, the other thing that we have is about sprinklers for anything that's over 11,999, so basically 12,000 square foot, whether that be commercial or residential. And then, this year, they added a group, a new group hazard occupancy, and they, we have also adopted a few more penalties that are allowed in the, don't foresee any major issues or any impacts on any current construction. K and H will probably be the ones that'd be used the most as far as that group H hazard, as we're doing some possible construction over on the Beamer side of town. And then, our life safety code, just removing the requirements for sprinklers for single-family and homes. Pretty straightforward, for the most part, the same as last year, or the last 2012, not a whole lot additions or releases. Questions for me? Thank you.
So, we are working on the ordinance changes for that, so you'll see that again. We're hoping for that to be effective January 1st of next year, just to have a easy, new, effective date. So, the next item kinda follows building codes. With House Bill 2439, the state changed the requirements that municipalities cannot prohibit building materials or methods that are allowed by a model code for either residential or commercial structures. So, some proposals with this, we're gonna have to amend our zoning ordinance, so you'll be seeing some changes with this. There are a couple of amendment, local amendments that we have to the building code, or I think electrical code, that we're gonna have to omit when we do our code change or code update, because the state doesn't allow us to make those exceptions anymore. The plan for the zoning ordinance, as far as our exterior building materials for commercial, we're gonna try to figure out a way to keep our preferred materials in the ordinance, but obviously not prohibit developers from any building materials that would be allowed by building code.
I've had a number of discussions with my next, my neighbor, Dr. Bonin, about this, and he honestly admits that when this bill came through, nobody paid much attention to it and sailed through. And he's been told by multiple cities, not just us, that this was a really bad bill. He has said that he would be willing to work with us and bring this bill up and amend it in the next cycle, and I think we probably got a pretty good chance. It originated because one city in the state passed an ordinance that required a certain building material, and there was only one option, Hammerill or somebody, and that's what got this all going. So, he's willing, and he's gonna probably actually come back and work with us, and I think there's other, there's other state representatives, I think, that are feeling the heat on this. So, my guess is it'll get amended in some fashion to be a little more flexible for what we use it for in the next, in the next session.
So, that would be two years from June before it could be changed, and that was kind of the intent of keeping all of our wording in there and meeting state law, but that way, hopefully, if it's changed back in two years, we can just revert back to what we already have. Right? Yeah. Yes.
So, I was going to ask if, I know we have to be in compliance with the law, but can we give builders and developers our preferred?
Yeah, and if they, if they, I mean, if they want to comply and agree to, and the market's gonna drive a lot of that. I mean, surrounding buildings, you know, you're gonna wanna blend in, you don't wanna be, you know, the only new metal building on 518, so, I mean, that's just not the trend at this point. So, our hope is that, you know, that will continue, and, you know, that they'll blend in with our, you know, surrounding buildings already. We will definitely encourage it.
I know League City is trying to work around this bill by putting ordinance language in that requires you, I guess, to talk to your HOA. Is that how that works?
They're requiring property owners form what's known as a property owners association or homeowners association to establish these regulations, but as our illustrious city attorney has pointed out, the state law's very specific about not adopting rules that would circumvent state law, so in some respects, it could, it could set us up for a legal challenge if we were to do that.
I was just gonna recommend we don't do that.
Good, good.
Let's let our representatives do their job.
So, this is a, my last one is sidewalks. So, again, I'm looking for direction for planning and zoning. They have not weighed in on this yet. It's kind of an issue that's come up recently, and unfortunately, this is not a case to go to ZBOA, because they can't completely waive a requirement. If they do a variance to a building height, it's, you know, increasing the building height by a certain footage, and, you know, there has to be a hardship, the shape of the lot or something. We can't just say, we can't take these cases to ZBOA, and they just say, no, you don't have to do a sidewalk. So, we've had some instances right now, we've got, basically sidewalks are required for all new development except residential with open-ditch streets. So, we've got infill lots and flood rebuilds that we require sidewalks for. These new homes are being constructed in existing neighborhoods, older neighborhoods that don't necessarily have sidewalks. There might be a sidewalk across the street, but not on their side of the street. Our current remedy is for them to pay into the sidewalk fund. We do have that set up. The sidewalk fund is an owner pays a fee before the issuance of their certificate of occupancy. It's an average of three contractor bids. The money is then deposited into a dedicated account just for that address, and the only thing it can be spent on is sidewalk at location. After ten years, an owner can request a refund, or the city can make a request to extend it for another ten years.
Yeah, I don't like that idea at all. I think that's a horrible idea. We have people that are trying to rebuild their houses and get back in their homes, they've been flooded out, they've done everything that the cities requested them to do, they've built their house up, they've got houses on either side of them that are four feet lower than they are with no sidewalks whatsoever, and you're asking them to build a 90-foot sidewalk, you're not gonna give them a certificate deposit until they do so, that's holding over their head. I think that's a horrible thing that the city's doing. I've had calls on it, and I know some other people have had calls on it, but that's just not right. Those people should get a certificate of deposit, they've done everything the city has done, told them to do, and then we're saying, no, no, now you gotta build a 90-foot sidewalk out in front of your yard, and nobody on that side, all the way down that way and all the way down that way has a sidewalk in front of their yard.
So, I'm not gonna shoot the messenger or anything, but I'm in 100% agreement, and I think it's very simple. Your property is grandfathered in. If you're the owner of the property, the property ownership's not changing hands, you're rebuilding because you had a natural disaster to your home, it would be idiotic for this government body to require you to either build a sidewalk or pay into a fund.
And staff doesn't disagree in the cases that have been mentioned.
And I didn't think that you did.
No, and that, but that's why Aubrey's here before you this evening, we've been able to work with those homeowners to get them where they need to be without providing
We've been able to work with those homeowners to get them where they need to be without providing a sidewalk. The difficulty is, is we're circumventing city ordinance. So, this is before you this evening, so that we can, we're asking y'all to recommend a change to city ordinance.
Yeah, so grandfathering.
Do you see the direction that we're going in with regards to this?
Thank you for bringing that forward.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
But I believe we focused on just the homes that are being rebuilt after Harvey. That picture right there, that's not the situation with that house. So, there's one piece of this, this is for the folks who are trying to get back into their homes. And I totally agree, we should not put any more requirements on them. But when it's new construction, really torn-down a home, they're building a new home, has nothing to do with the flood, then I assume there's a different recommendation for that?
I don't have a recommendation, and I don't really have a solution at this point. My initial thinking is that if your block doesn't have sidewalks, that you don't have to put in sidewalks.
And I think it's that simple.
I don't, we gotta figure out a way to write that.
Why should it be that confusing? If you live on a street that doesn't have sidewalks, we're not gonna require you to build a sidewalk just because you knock your house down and rebuild it.
And we've got people that are coming in, they're wanting to buy these houses, redo them, get them back in shape. The next thing you know, they, they may wanna flip that house. They are flippers. Well, that gets that house back in good construction, it gets it back on the market, and it gets it back paying taxes to this place. Why would we wanna put up some kind of barrier or block them from trying to do what everybody wants them to do? Get these houses backed up and in great shape and back on the tax rolls? I, I don't, I agree. You're not supposed to.
I think it's just common sense.
Just 'cause it's new construction, we're not gonna go out there, oh, you're new, you tore that one down and built it back up. We want you to build new sidewalks.
I think it's just common sense. I think for every developer that comes in and wants to develop property, and, you know, whether it's Avalon or whoever else, then yeah, they have to meet current requirements. Anybody that's in an existing neighborhood or an existing house can keep it the way that it's been for the last 123 years or whatever.
But this, but this house is on a street where two other houses have been torn down, and new houses are building up. So, if you said, put the money in the fund, because it's quite conceivable on this street that all of those houses will be gone in a couple of years, and then you would use the sidewalk fund to put a sidewalk in.
But why would we tax people that way? That doesn't make any sense to me.
But we have people all the time complaining that we don't have sidewalks. So, the whole point of what this was to, I'm not.
No, no, no.
Just let me finish.
Yeah, please do.
I'm not arguing the contention that you guys said earlier. If you're on a street, and you're the guy, you know, and you rebuild from your, from your previous property, and nobody else has sidewalks, and nobody else is rebuilding, fine, leave them alone. I'm with you on that. But I'm just telling you, there isn't a area in between that we need to define, and this is a perfect example of one. That whole street's gonna get torn down, and big houses are gonna get put on it, and, and there won't be a sidewalk.
I don't think that we should hold the homeowner or the property owner hostage by requiring them to do something that's not already there. It doesn't make sense. Like, we were going to make Boatwright Marine at Dickinson Bayou, at the very end of this town, pay into a sidewalk fund at one time. Now, I don't think that he did, because common sense prevailed. But this is the kind of out-of-control stuff that we need to eliminate. And so, if ever, let's just say, for example, the heart of the downtown, the older homes, for all those people that are building new homes, buying the property, tearing them down, rebuilding beautiful homes there, you, we, I am thankful as a city government that the property value increases like tenfold. That's enough. I'm not gonna, you know, the taxable value on that piece of property goes from 70,000 to half a million. They're paying enough in taxes. And then we're gonna come back and say, well, if you're not required to put a sidewalk in, then we're gonna make you pay into a fund, because somewhere down the line, 15 or 20 years from now, we'll have enough money to put a sidewalk in in your whole subdivision. That doesn't make any sense. If you live in an area that doesn't have sidewalks, you shouldn't be required to have a sidewalk put in or to pay into a fund. It just seems like, it, it, it doesn't seem that complicated to me.
I would just like to throw out there that Steve's hitting on a point that is, I think, we need to consider. This area right here is actually a transition. You've got business on one side, you've got residential on the other. And this area actually backs up to the old junior high as well, which we talked about sidewalks to schools, which I realize is not an active campus necessarily. But I think there may be some areas of town where we may need to evaluate whether or not a sidewalk would be beneficial. And granted, there may not be a sidewalk there now, so the fund would make sense. But I think there are gonna be some situations where, I don't think this is black and white, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I think there's some areas that are transitional that we might need to take a look. Does it make sense, or does it not make sense?
Okay, so, again, to be clear, and we, we may just agree to disagree. My point is, is if it's a single-family residential property, and it does not have a sidewalk, the government should not require them to put in a sidewalk, because there are some members in the community that want sidewalks. If that's the case, go to the voters for a bond and demand that you're gonna put sidewalks in in every neighborhood that you want a sidewalk in, and let them vote on it. I think it's, I think it's ridiculous that we would go into single-family residentials and say, well, we think it's a good idea, because we heard from, at the Rotary Club meeting, that we need sidewalks. So, we're gonna make you pay into a fund, so that we can put sidewalks in one day. That's the worst kind of government overreach that I've heard since we've been up here.
And why is that logic any different from a builder coming in?
Because it's a development. It is blank property, they are building a residential development.
But they're putting in new homes with new values, they, they meet all the, every bit of your argument.
No, you're talking about taking an existing residential lot and requiring them to do something different. We've had this, I, I don't know if you were on council at the time, but we had the argument with, with the building codes. Right? That if you add it on to a building, so let's say, for example, you have a metal building downtown, right? And it's 10,000 square, I don't know, 5,000 square feet warehouse, and you wanted to add 2,500 feet of office, that the whole entire metal building had to come down and be up to code. That was actually an argument when I got on council eight years ago, nine years ago. And we said, no, why would we do that to the individual and punish him for improving his property? It didn't make sense. Well, this seems very similar, in my opinion.
Now, some of these, to Steve's point, are gonna be safety issues down, down the road, I guess, through these transitions. Will those be further evaluated by another, I mean, is that gonna be a committee evaluation? Something that'll evaluate? I mean, I see there's a sidewalk across the street on this one. Did that person put that in voluntarily, or?
So, that sidewalk was installed back when the, that particular roadway was built and then rebuilt, it was maintained. What I would suggest is, the impetus for this originally was the flooded homes that were torn down and rebuilt, and it didn't make sense putting in a sidewalk that didn't connect anything. Obviously, there's multiple opinions on council. Let us run this through PNC and bring us a recommendation to you. We're wholeheartedly agreed from staff's perspective. We don't wanna force a home that was torn down because of Harvey and rebuilt to put in a sidewalk to nowhere. Maybe give some options for consideration that may meet everybody's opinion up here. I'm saying that somewhat tongue-in-cheek, that I don't know how likely that is, but.
I think we're, you know, we're all in agreement on, on two ends of this argument. You know, the Avalon, you guys are gonna put sidewalks in. The, the home that was destroyed or rebuilt because of Harvey, there was no sidewalk there before. We're not gonna come in and say, oh, we're sorry, your house was flooded, and you gotta rebuild. Now, you gotta put a sidewalk in on top of it. Somewhere in the middle ground where, you know, the gentrification of a neighborhood, where people are coming in, buying maybe multiple lots, putting up big, big homes. Well, there's some, you know, we probably need to discuss that a little more and figure out where we can agree on that one. But I think both ends, you know, that we're in agreement, and then.
Well, I know there wasn't a sidewalk over to the high school, and this was a high priority of our Honorable Mayor, and I'm just thrilled to death with what turned out over there. But that was something, an incentive that he took upon himself and moved the entire city, saying, hey, this is a safety matter, like Brent was mentioning, let's put these sidewalks through the high school. And, and it was paid for not by the homeowners, that was paid for by us. And it's a great, it's, the kids can walk now to school without being in the road. So, that can happen in every one of these situations, where you might look at this, and down the road, Steve Rocky might go, you know, this is a safety issue. I think the city ought to put that in, and then we can agree to it or not agree to it, but.
And I would agree with that.
But when you sit there and say, okay, you gotta rebuild this, and when you do, you're gonna have to put anything.
If you don't have a sidewalk in, you can't move back into your house. I mean, so, so to use it as a very extreme example, so the big White House on 528 got burned down. So, we're gonna tell the big White House on 528 that when you rebuild, you gotta build a sidewalk on 528.
That's a ditch.
The current code, that's an open ditch, though. They wouldn't be required, but yes.
But if you're gonna make these guys do it, that was an extreme example. If you're gonna make these guys do it, then, you know, what's next? No open ditches, and we're gonna start putting, making those people put in sidewalks? I mean.
And I will add, the Planning and Zoning Commission is passionate about sidewalks as well. And, for instance, the Vergata Commons Development, they stood there, they requested to pay into the sidewalk fund, and the commission said, no, you know, we need sidewalks. And so, they figured out a way, and, you know, we're getting sidewalks over there. So, I think the commission, I think they have, you know, good thoughts. We'll pass on your thoughts, and we'll see if we can get a good recommendation for you.
Just for the viewing public, no homeowners have been kept from moving into their homes. So, I understand this is a concern. We need to figure out a solution. But everybody that's built the house has been allowed to move into it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, capital project update.
I would like to reintroduce council to our new Director of Engineering and City Engineer, Hill Arias. He is here this evening to give y'all his first capital improvements report. Y'all seem feisty tonight, so good luck, Hill.
I feel like a Price is Right contestant coming down all the way, taking the long way over here.
Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here to give you the brief, a brief update to our capital improvement projects that we have the ongoing at, at the city right now. If at any point you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me.
Technology.
Yeah. There it goes. Okay, the first thing I wanted to share with you guys is the completion of, the construction of restrooms and the pavilion at Old City Park. City staff conducted a final walkthrough on September 24th, at which time we determined that the project was substantially complete. The city's park and recreation department has now taken this project and taken it from here. They've added some signs, and they're stocking it up and making it user-friendly. And I did wanna mention also that the acceptance of the improvements and the initiation of the one-year maintenance bond is part of tonight's consent agenda. Next, we have the ongoing construction of Black Hawk Boulevard Phase 2. To date, the city spent $2.8 million on the construction of this project, and it's a $4.5 million project. As of last month, we were sitting at 62% done with the project. We're actually having a progress meeting tomorrow with the contractor, and they're gonna give us some updated numbers on that. So, it'll be a little bit more than 62%. They were rocking along in the weeks leading up to Tropical, Tropical Storm Imelda. And due to that storm, it put them back about a week. But since then, they've gotten back into the groove of things, and they're, they're moving along pretty quick. Their goal moving forward is to pour concrete every day, if possible. And we will be getting, along with the completion percentage, we will be getting an updated schedule from the guys. And it'll give us a good indication as to when we might be able to expect the project to be wrapped up. But right now, I'm saying it's probably gonna be in the first quarter of next year. And now, the 2018 Storm Sewer Cleaning and Inspection Project. When I came here, this project had a stop work order in place. Stop work order was issued back in April, because of some confusion on the scope of the work. Since then, and in recent weeks, both city engineering staff and public work staff have met with each other and with the city attorney, because we're trying to see where, there's a breakdown in communication here, where we got to $674,000 expended on this project, and the contract is for 696, and we still have some streets left out there. So, in meeting with them, it became evident that there were issues with the specs, the way it was written, and it, it landed, it gave the contractor the opportunity to do extra work, because it was not clear that it, that the, of what the scope of the work was gonna be. Where are we standing today? As you can see, we've spent about 675,000. And this was supposed to be a 696,000 dollar project. Yes?
It was supposed to be a 696,335 dollar project, and that was to do the entire job of Storm Sewer Cleaning and Inspection. We spent 674,597. How much have we gotten completed to the original contract? What we thought we were going to do is be completed with 696. We're at 674. How much have we done, and how much have we not done?
Of the original intended scope, it was about $194,000 worth of work. So, there's a significant amount of work that was outside of the scope.
Did we agree to?
So, we're right now.
Not real clear on that.
So, short of speaking ill of any previous employees, we've had some issues that they had approved certain line items, things related to this contract that had left the project incomplete, but approved the contractor to do more, more work than we intended.
So, so we originally had $196,000 of work done, contracted for, but they billed us 674,000?
No, the original contract was for the 696. So, we didn't have 194,000 for this project, and we've expended 674.
Okay.
The total project cost was $700,000 from the get-go. The concern is that the contractor did work outside the scope of what was originally intended, doing add alternate items that were things that were helpful, but not necessarily a requirement. And so, correct. And so, what we're doing right now is we're going back with the contractor, try to rectify some of these things. It's unfortunate, we've corrected the mistake on our end, but we're still trying to, to work with the contractor to get what we initially wanted done and need done, completed.
What percentage of the work that we initially wanted done has been completed, regardless of the cost?
Of the work that we wanted done, that's been completed, it's a little over 50%, between 50, 55%.
We can work out an agreement, we're in the process of doing so with the contractor, to maybe make this a multi-year approach to get everything completed. Unfortunately, this was a effort that's done after Tropical Storm Harvey, and it hadn't been done on a routine basis, not to the degree that we did following Harvey. My recommendation with council, much like everything else, is that we do this on a five-year cycle continually. That this is not a situation that the, the storm sewers are left without it being jetted out and cleaned of any silt or debris that builds up over time until the next storm, but that it's done routinely.
I did wanna add also, though.
Excuse me, excuse me, the change orders.
The second, extra work was done with change orders, right?
Correct.
And how much were the change orders for? I mean, individually, were there several of them, or was there just one, or?
It was authorization by staff that wasn't an official change order, but authorized the contractor to do some additional work. So, it's not.
Change orders, or was it one?
It was multiple correspondences, but it wasn't an official change order.
So, of the work that's been done, was it all needed to be done? Is that what I'm hearing?
It was needed to be done, but not to the extent to supplant a previous item, a previous street or two that we needed to get completed. So, it wasn't as important as what we wanted to get completed. So it wasn't as important as what we wanted to get completed. We've corrected the issue with staffing, we have an all-new department associated with this, and we've put some new players in place to, to monitor these things so that we don't have a similar issue reoccur. Um, but as Hill gets started, he's coming across some of these things that we're-
And this was something that, um, you know, I came in and I, I immediately realized, "Man, this is gonna be a uncomfortable fix here." Um, uh, what kind of mess did I inherit here? Um, but the, uh, contractor has been, um, good here in the recent past couple of days to, um, communicate with us, and, uh, something that we've done is, uh, we have sent to them a request for a cost proposal. This re- request contains in it the streets that were, had not been done, that were in the original scope, and not only that, we gave them quantities so that we can get a good, accurate, uh, number back. Uh, previously, they didn't really, they didn't have quantities, they had streets, was what they had.
So in my, in, in my opinion, it's a hard stop at six-ninety-six.
Correct.
And you bring, you guys bring any additional requests back to us?
And that's what we're doing.
Okay.
With the, with the solution on how to fund it and how to make it fit the budget.
Correct.
Correct.
I guess at that point, we'll prioritize what needs to be done and how to go out and figure out where the money's gonna come from.
And this contract was intended to be a once and, once and done, finite, uh, work activity. My recommendation is for it not to be a once and done and that it's done systematically on a continual cycle, just like you would go cut a ditch.
Moving on to our twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen street maintenance program, uh, the proj- program itself is in the final stages, uh, getting near, getting near, uh, completion. Uh, we're currently awaiting for the contractor to return and complete the rest of Wilderness Trail, uh, which was not done previously because there's some, as I understand it, some home construction going on, and it makes sense to, um, lay down fresh asphalt and, uh, have a whole bunch of trucks driving down that road, so, um, we've got a few minor details left, uh, such as the installation of, uh, loop detectors at some traffic lights and addressing some concerns that, uh, several citizens have expressed in the, uh, transition from the new asphalt to their driveways, so we're gonna address that also. Um, finally, the one thing that we hope we can get, get to do, um, is there may be, after all is said and done, there may be a loo-, uh, enough money left to repave Diamond Lane. Um, Diamond Lane is on FM twenty-three fifty-one between, uh, Mary's Creek and Clear Creek. It's a cul-de-sac asphalt, half the asphalt's gone, and, uh, so the, uh, residents there have, uh, um, come to pay those visits, uh, frequently and, uh, um, keep reminding us that, "Hey, we, we help us out." Uh, well, this is, this may be a solution here, if we have enough money, uh, left, go, uh, finish Diamond Lane, and, uh, if it doesn't happen this year, then, uh, it'll be a priority next year in the, uh, next.
And Hill's following the pavement management plan recommendation, so Diamond Lane was already on the, on the slate to be completed.
Can I ask a quick question? Oh, you know, this better, probably Wes Bredingos.
Yes.
Yeah, is that one done or are they gonna do something to clean it up?
They're supposed to come back and redo that, that roadway to address some of the anomalies associated with it.
Okay, on to our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, street maintenance program. Uh, our projects coordinator, Bria Whitmire, and, uh, she's sitting in the back, back there, I, um, I didn't tell her that I was going to call her out, but, um, she's a licensed engineer, uh, like myself. Uh, between she and I, uh, we're working on the specifications for this project and, um, hitting the ground running. Uh, she's using IMS, um, uh, report that the city has previously gotten and, uh, going through that and then, um, seeing where all repairs need to be made, and in the meantime, I'm going through the specifications, reading it line by line and, uh, making sure that what it, what it says in there, um, meets state laws starting early in, uh, twenty twenty if weather allows. The next capital improvement project we have coming up is the rehab and remediation of lift station number twenty-three. This is a lift station that is located at the intersection of FM, uh, five-eighteen and Oak Drive. The project will address several issues that have been ongoing with the lift station itself. The most noticeable issue is how hydrogen sulfide has taken a toll on the facility. Interior of the wet well has a significant amount of pitting, and due to the, uh, due to a large amount of inflow and infiltration, uh, that this lift station receives, uh, it can get backed up at times, especially after a heavy rainstorm. So this project will address these issues and more. The estimated construction cost is four million dollars. The design consultant will be submitting the final plans to the city this Thursday, and we plan on having a bid opening on November the fourteenth, and with the hopes of, uh, awarding that bid in December. Probably, I wanted to share with you guys some of the drainage advocacy efforts that have been, uh, we've been undertaking in the, uh, past recent weeks. Uh, on the screen, you'll see a list of entities with whom the city has met to discuss drainage issues from small to big. The city has been represented by some combination of, uh, Marad, Stephen, myself, and Renee at some of these, uh, meetings here. As you can see, we've been pretty busy, but we're not gonna slow down now. We will continue our efforts to, uh, represent the city and get as much information as we possibly can, and do anything we can do now to ensure that the city, uh, friends would, when it comes time for something to happen, we'll be, uh, uh, up there at the front of the line. And finally, um, I wanted to, uh, make a note to you guys, uh, we do have the job opening, uh, posted for a deputy director of engineering and projects, and we've been pretty upfront with, um, indicating that we're looking for somebody with a good background in hydrology and, um, hydraulics, and so this person's gonna be our, our drainage group. Uh, it's been posted for a couple of weeks now, it's gonna be closing later on this week, and, uh, after that, we'll have our interviews lined up. Uh, we've got, looks like, uh, we've got some good candidates out there, and, uh, looking forward to getting this filled. So, are there any questions?
Oh, thanks, Hill.
Thank you.
Good job.